See this evening, we've got a council workshop scheduled at 5:30 this evening. And so in regards to trying to keep on track, I'm going to go ahead and get us called into order for the workshop. This is a workshop that is, has been duly called. It is being held on December the 12th, 2023 at 5:30 before our regular meeting. Having called the meeting to order, I want to turn it over to the administrator, Andy Merriman.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. So rightly so, Mr. Bettis had asked me, had been in October, just how some of our projects were progressing along and suggested that we do have a workshop just to give an overview on our current projects, the projects that we're working on now and touch base on the status of those projects, remind you all what those projects are, and then of course, just by way of reminder, where we are funding those projects. I do want to first point out that we do have John Gogonhour in the room. He is our projects, project manager for all of these projects. Of course, Lindsey James is with him. She's our coordinator and pretty much the ramrod on a lot of the bureaucratic administrative things that go along with that. And then Mike is here. Mike is, as you know, supervises all of that stuff as the deputy city administrator, and he's here to respond to some of the questions or some questions that may come up. And then, of course, I've asked Public Safety to be in the room because one of, a couple of these larger projects are specific to public safety. Parks and Rec could not be here tonight because they are at their, they are at their annual conference. So we'll head and jump right into this. What you see in front of you is just an overview. Now, this is, I want to make, I want to make very clear about what this is. This is what we presented to you in April of 2022. If you'll recall, we went through an exercise right shortly after the ARPA money came in about what, how we would fund a number of these projects that we knew we needed to accomplish. This, what you see in front of you was a result of those discussions. And so what I want to do is make, make sure that y'all are aware that this is a baseline for how we progressed from this point on to where we are this evening. You'll see that just from a housekeeping standpoint, we color coded those things back in April of '22, just so you knew that the blue was Parks and Rec, the green was public safety, and the rest were miscellaneous projects. And then, of course, all of the funds that you see outlined beside it were where we could be drawing funds from, but that was a, a very malleable document because it was really just to demonstrate where we could pull funds from to accomplish all of these projects. But this is the, just a historical snapshot of how we got this discussion started. Reminding y'all that I do want to remind you that the ARPA funds in that, that far column, at the time, I think were all, Mike, and help me out with this, but if you'll recall, ARPA funds initially were restricted. They were hyper restricted when they came out. So the $16 million that we received were restricted by the treasury for a litany of projects were outlined in their initial report. They subsequently changed that ruling to allow for $10 million of that to be used for unrestricted government uses. And then the balance of that, in our case, the $6,600,000 or so, had to fall within the original ARPA guidelines. So let's see, I want to make sure I didn't want to, and so let's jump into where we are now. If you look in front of you, you'll see our major projects that we are currently working on now. The first one was Berry, as far as it goes to career relief, Berry is, it goes to the city portion of it, the golf clubhouse and the South Subaru station. So there's a couple of things to point out here. One, these totals that you see as far as estimated costs were at the time that the project, under the project's inception, were the estimated costs. What we've got here is total project price in the second column, which includes everything, including land purchase, architectural engineering fees, other land development fees, environmental studies, et cetera. So all of that stuff you see in the total project price is there in that column. These are the major projects that we're working on now. And as you can see in that final column, our estimated substantial completion date all fall within this fiscal year. We looked at open South Subaru in June of, the fire station in 2020, June of '24. The clubhouse is April-ish, May-ish of '24. And then having career relief into Berry in March of next year, and then the city staff that will be moving into Berry in May of 2024. But these are the major projects that are currently underway. You can see where we are funding these projects, where we've got name of fund here. These were all budgeted projects that we've been working on for at least, oh gosh, 18 months now.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
The, um, the substation, Subaru Road substation?
Yes, sir.
What did we fail to figure in the estimated cost at the time?
If you go back to this initial, this guy, that, that revenue overview, you'll see that we had, I think, on this, there was three stations that we had identified, one at Blue Ridge Plantation, one south of 85, and then one at South Subaru. That $4.588 million estimate was just at that time, just that in estimate. This was prior to recent costs for all the things that things increased exponentially. But yeah, we were, we were off one of those estimates by, as you can see. I mean, even conservatively, we were probably off by $2 million, but we didn't expect inflation or any impact by the time we went to contract on that to be that substantial. But those were, but to be honest with you, it was really just kind of, they were swags at the time, too. We were hoping we can get them in at $5 million. We clearly can't. So that's where, that was just off. We were just off. Going on here, and I want to point out here, some of the minor projects that we're working on, and this is just a snapshot of minor projects. This is not by any stretch of the imagination, everything that we're working on, and when we get to the final slide, you'll see the number of projects that we're working on. But they're varying in size and scope, everything from issues that we've had, just getting the Jason Street Garage moving, to things that you've budgeted through the general fund for police and city hall renovations, repairs of the Cannon Center deck, evidence storage for PD, additions to the, additions, improvements to the Needmore Center's interior. So these are just some of the minor projects that we've got going on that are illustrative of not, not anything special, more just to point out that this is some of the things that we would ordinarily have been doing in any given fiscal year.
I thought the Cannon Center deck had been done.
We, the Cannon Center deck was done, I think, in, we, we completed it in 20, I think maybe this time of '22, could have been last year. We've gone back and there's been some issues with the decking itself and some war painting the boards that we need to go back and make some repairs on. So that reflects that contract price for the Cannon Center deck.
Are we making sure we're not using the same material or whatever design that so next year, we don't have a $25,000, $30,000 repair bill?
Well, yes, sir. We are. Yes. And, and actually, how we finalize the repairs on that is still yet to be determined. I know we've probably manufactured the boards back in to determine how to best fix them, but what the, the major renovation that we did had to do with the substructure as well as the decking. This, these are decking issues, if I'm not mistaken, that's specific to decking issues.
According to that also, we knew we were going to incur this whole, even the finishing of it that we haven't done yet, that we've got to do with the minor repairs.
Oh, that's that real explicit, you pay, I pay wood you're using? Why don't we just pour it? Be done with it?
It was a $300,000 versus $70,000.
It was a significant difference.
So then, but add 50 more to that, is that right?
No, it would have added 25 more to pour it.
Or about $300,000.
Yeah.
Okay, and what did we originally pay?
The difference was $70,000, and this repair is $20,000.
Well, now, so how about the repair prior to this one?
75.
75?
Yeah, versus $300,000 to pour it.
The third to cost.
Third to cost. Even with the $25,000 addition, it's the third of the cost. Arguably, yes, lifespan, if we'd poured it, would have been longer, but I don't think substantially longer to warrant the additional $200,000 increase.
It would.
Huh?
It would, that goes back anyway.
Going on to other projects that you see here, these are, these are projects that we are either currently in design on or have, in this case, Turner Field, we are in the protest period for a ward. You look at Ward's Creek Trail Phase One, that's, we, we've received funding for Ward's Creek Trail One through the state transportation enhancement program, so we had grant money coming in for that. But we've got these projects in, in the works. I will, I want to point out quickly, the convenience center, the recycling center portion of this is kind of for us a question mark. There's been a number of things that we have decided to kind of pump the brakes on with that project. There's been some design concerns, some design issues that are specific to a retaining wall. We've made some immediate repairs to the, the way the flow of the project comes in and out of, of the convenience center. Some of the pavement repairs have been done. We're trying to get that place cleaned up a little bit, make it a little more user friendly. And then, of course, we know with the new fuel system that's coming online, we have to, we were waiting on that to be installed as well. So that for us is a budgeted project, but we have not, we have not moved into that final phase of what it's going to look like at this time. We're hoping it's nowhere near that $2 million mark, but we're working through that as well. Ward's Creek Phase One, we have, again, the, the grant funding in, we've identified some right of way issues that we're working through, but beyond that, we're prepared to start moving on that within the next year or so. And then, of course, the South Tiger River Trail, I want to point out again that that involves not only just estimated costs for the entirety of the, the trail, but also land acquisition costs are in there as well.
How long is the, with this delay on the convenience center, how long is that going to delay us with the fuel system?
Oh, it won't delay us with fuel system. Fuel system's going to come first. So fuel system's coming in, but we're not making any of the changes out there until we get the fuel station in. But it shouldn't impact it, but we want to make sure we get that work done first.
Okay, you, you want to make sure you get the new building up out there, is that it?
This is not, this, the, the fuel station is not part of the, the building, the shop, it doesn't have anything to do with the fuel station. But we, that, that's more predicated on design issues that we've got on the other side of the fence. So the fueling station alone is its own issue, but the, the fence, or the other side of the fence with the, the shop and the, where the dumpsters go, the backside of the facility, that's part of it. We're still working through some design issues and had a number of design issues. Point is, is with the, with the convenience center, that's on hold right now. We, I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. The plan projects, now, I want to point out with these plan projects in particular, that these are all four of these are tied to the reimbursement resolution that council passed in the late summer of this year. We have, we have begun, and again, these are reflective of some estimated costs on all of these things for, to accomplish the construction of the projects. Now, we are, to Mr. Bettis' point, we've got the fire station north, what we're calling north, and we've got the public safety training facility. Those initial estimates are much lower than what we think these projects are ultimately going to come in at. And we're basing the fire station numbers on the current numbers of the fire station we built on South Subaru Road because the intent is to use the same design, move it to the north side of town. The public safety training facility, we're dialing in on what that number's going to look like, but we're pretty close to it. And then, of course, projects Titus and Project Indy are both, Indy's actually, Indy's actually in design right now. I've got some schematics and some work being done on Indy. And then Titus, we're in the process of working through some land acquisition. But these are the ones that are, when you see the name of fund, these are the unknowns. We don't know how these are going to be funded yet, but the intent is if we go through the process to bond these projects, it'll be through, that's how we would fund it. Any questions so far? John, or you might want to add anything to this discussion?
I guess there's probably a couple of things I'd like, I'd like to mention. Can you go back to the first, not the very first slide, say? Mr. Bettis, your question about the fire station. Couple of things in that, in that, do you remember what the square footage number per square foot?
Per, per square foot?
When we generated that number at 4.5 million, 4.6 million, it was basically said, you know, and we think the construction is going to be X mile, we think the building's going to be this much square footage, and it should be this much per square foot. It was about double per square foot of what we had estimated. That's how much of a change from when we were pre-planning it to what the conditions were when it hit for materials, supplies, and whatnot. It was, it was some bad timing. Just we came in on this project that kind of toward the end, but still in the midst of that, the cost being so high for construction. But the other part, just, just also a million dollars of that is, includes land purchase, which wasn't in that $4.5 million. So that explains a little bit of where that number is so off from where we had estimated. And certainly, it was kind of a, we picked a square, per square foot based on, we spoke to other jurisdictions, we just build a fire station, how much did you pay per square foot? We paid this per square foot, we're going to pay our square foot, it's $10,000 square feet, that comes back, gave us that number. And it was just.
I think it's like 720 square.
I can't remember.
I think that's the number.
Well, when we got a, a, an estimate from someone to build it, did it come back at that new level?
No, that 4.6 million was before we had any estimates from anybody about, like, you know, what part of the bid process gave us that number. It was our investigation, like I said, calling other jurisdictions, finding how much they spent on the fire station.
But at some point, you put it out for bid?
Oh, yeah.
And did it come back with the new number?
Came back with, I believe it's 8.7.9 million dollars.
Did we not think maybe at that point, it might be, might want to wait a year to do it?
I'm not going to answer that part.
Because it reached a point where it was not going to stay. I think everybody felt that.
Well, here's, I got to remind, but by way of reminder, those ARPA funds is where this fire station will be paid out of. It's paying out of unrestricted funds. It has to be, it had to be obligated by December of 2024 and spent by 2026. So to some degree, when it comes specifically to ARPA funds, the clock was ticking. So that was the lowest hanging fruit of, of how to handle and approach those unrestricted ARPA funds within no need because in order to effectuate Public Safety Training Facility, we needed to vacate the Hood Road site, move them into the, the new station on South Subaru and Chick Springs, so that we can begin, begin working design on the Public Safety Training Facility site on Hood Road. And those were the ones that were identified as priorities by council. So as council outlined those priorities, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and so on, we then took those and moved forward with it. So yeah, it's the timing, great, probably not, but in this particular case, I don't know that it would make that big of a difference from a financial standpoint. I think we'd have been, we'd probably been pretty close, but to Mike's point, it was a million dollars of that, the dirt.
Right.
I think one of the things that, that we've, that we've learned as well, too, and we had this confirmed in the last two weeks, Andy and I were at a meeting regarding the school district, they had, they had suggested that their building costs recently on some of their schools had escalated 300%. And we met with a architectural group that does a lot of public work, including schools, and they confirmed that for us last week in a meeting, that they're seeing numbers in that, in that range on public buildings.
The, it just by way, I, I just looked this up, that I was interested in, especially when we're talking about what we're doing now versus our planned projects, specific to Indy and Titus and the Public Safety Training Facility. This, let me this today, this building, a police and courts, and two ARPA, about $20 million in aggregate in 2008, what, 2023? So you take from 2008, when the bond, the initial bond was done for these, but these, these projects was 22, 23 million dollars. That, if, you, you multiply that by 44.67% inflation rate between 2008 and today, that's a $30 million project to get all of this same stuff done. So I think it's important to realize, especially in that compressed amount of time from 2021 to where we are today, inflation skyrocketed and, and that, so there was that, there was inflationary pressure, but there was also availability pressures on raw materials to get a lot of this stuff done. So we, and you know this, we were just subject to some degree from a pricing perspective on that. But again, I, I don't think that we're that far off anyway, we would have been that far off on that for the facilities. This one?
On, on all of our projects, are we making sure that we're, we, well, I had assumed that when we had new development in town, that, that if new site annexed in, we had sidewalks and probably street lighting, I'm not quite sure about the street lighting, but are we, is all of that in this budget or is it going to be an add?
For all of these projects?
Well, let's just talk about the fire station.
Okay.
Is it in, do we have sidewalks at the fire station?
We didn't add it to the, the scope, but we, the reason we didn't add it to the scope of the initial project is because part of the reason we wanted to pick, well, that we picked that, that site was SCDOT, the potential for partnership with SCDOT to adjust that intersection in Chick Springs and South Subaru Road. And we didn't put the sidewalks into this cost because we don't want SCDOT to do improvements at South Subaru and Chick Springs and then go into tariff right away when we put sidewalks. So no, in this, in that project, we did not put sidewalks in there, in the scope. Now, at the end of the day, they'll be there at some point, but as far as into this dollar amount that you see in front of you, it is not in there.
So when we get a CO, it'll, there'll be sidewalks?
No, not when we get a CO. There'll be sidewalks.
How about street lighting?
I don't know about street, do we have street lighting in there? Nope, nope.
Why not?
I don't want to have to, I don't know.
But if, if DOT.
I don't know how much right of way DOT is going to take.
Yeah, but.
I just don't want to do the work and spend the money to install it and then make a return later.
But that might be 10 years before they get around to it.
Well, we won't wait 10 years.
We, we are, we're not, the intent's not to wait 10 years, but.
This is in the works.
But why didn't we budget it?
Because we knew as part of this project.
Yeah, but we still are going to have to pay out the money. You should have said, it should have been budgeted. Whoever's looking at the plan should say sidewalks, lighting. And maybe, maybe you did consider that.
The burden's just tied to the ARPA dollars and, you know, we, we got obligated and have them spent, obligated to the installation of the streetlights to get our period, I can't use that money anyway. So that would have been money we just set aside out of the general fund that we said unspent until we got ready to put the sidewalks in.
And why wouldn't it, what, what, explain this to me? If DOT has to go in and, if they, if they encroach on what is city property, which should be taken right of way, why wouldn't they put in the sidewalks that they have to?
We're trying to be a partner with them and we're trying to help them.
I'm not sure which one specifically he asked.
So we're just trying to make sure that we're giving, because one, they came to us, they asked us what we were going to do to expand the road and address the intersection at intersection two. And we said, no, we're not doing anything. It's a DRT roads, but y'all, and I said, you know, you got problems, you know, we don't have the money to spend on that, but we'll partner with it, crack the mission right of way. We made sure there's a proper setback, enough to put the stations back far enough so that they got plenty of room on our property. We require, acquire that little house, we'll have all the property down there, so that takes money that when they don't want to have to acquire that right of way. So we're just trying to find a place to be partners to install sidewalk and then turn around two years later and say, we got to pay you for the sidewalk and install it three years ago. Just, it just didn't seem like it would be good, make good partners, did they? They're aware of what we're doing.
But if, if somebody else had bought that land and annexed in the city, we would require some.
It was a sweep off land, though, they know that.
I know it, but it's, that's just not right. Just because we can to switch, just because we can switch the rules as we go along because we make the rules, doesn't make it right. I mean, I, I understand your, your thinking behind it, but.
We're still talking about the fire department on Subaru Road? Yeah, I can see where you're coming from, Jay, because, you know, we've always stressed the buildings with drive, with.
We bought Station 56.
Yeah.
And there was no connectivity of sidewalks. We didn't go back in and do that because it was existing, but if we had built it, we would have put it in. Now, we've got that done, and thankfully we did because we figured out that, that, the, the development there, they hadn't completed their part of the sidewalks. And now we're waiting on street lighting out there because it's, you know, it's a safety issue, it's just dark out there.
I don't even say it's like, two years later, I don't have a guarantee from a private developer to back to put sidewalks in, by his rate, to do it, but I know we're willing to do it. And we're getting, you know, pay for today, pay for tomorrow, again, not included in the budget. That was our reasoning behind it. But they will be installed and street lighting will as well. It's not that they're not willing to be.
My thing is important, we will comply with our own standards in this particular case, knowing that part of the reason we bought that property and situated the building the way we did was to ensure that we didn't have to spend the money twice, or that somebody didn't have to spend the money twice. And that's why we did what we did.
As a matter of timing, SCDOT has actually communicated about their plans that they're, they've got. Ask for input initially, they're working on those plans now, and then they're supposed to come back and keep us in the loop with it. But that's not like a, not like a maybe down the road, they are actively working on improvements for that now.
Any kind of timetable they mentioned?
They did not, but I will tell you, it was a much different conversation than, than I had with them whenever I went to the, the neighborhood meeting in regards to the way Hampton Corporal stuff they're looking at. I went there that night, and that's, that's a, a big difference, big difference in the conversation I had that night, because it was kind of like, oh, you know, what are you going to do? And then now they called and actually said, we are looking at this, we are one of the consultants that was, you know, hired by SCDOT, looking at this, want to make sure that whatever we design incorporates some of the concerns that you guys have and all that. So I, I don't have a timeframe, but they are supposed to keep me in the loop.
Sarah, with your question about timing on some of that, one of the things is that we can't carry around warrant, the, the shop, the big shop, until we get the existing fire, I mean, fuel pump hardware, the brain that runs our fuel pump system is in that building. So once we get all the fuel system changed over, then we'll be able to, what we're going to do, we're going to move forward, we're going to go ahead and demo that shop out, demo the transfer station out, make improvements to the, continue to make improvements out there on the paving and clean up the area. The question becomes is that when it came back, we had Sausen come out and kind of walk the plan that we had put together to give us an idea of what they think that the net cost would cost. It came back to $1.9 million, which about a million, about $900,000. Well, I thought it was going to be, it's moving dirt, it just makes me imagine it's going to be. So we're just trying to decide, go at that, of that project at this point, but we will be doing some improvements on the site and spending some money on that. We just don't think right now it's going to be anywhere near $2 million, but.
Well, I think.
We're just trying to make sure that that is the best way to invest $2 million to improve upside, I can't remember the sentence.
Well, I guess the question I was asking earlier about the fuel system, so what you're saying is the, the controlling hardware, software, for now, for the, what's we have now, because we haven't switched over, right?
That is correct.
It's, it's in the old shop?
Yes.
So what are we waiting on about the new controlling?
New systems will relocate that to the, where the pumps are.
Okay, and we've got that scheduled?
We're working on it. We've run into some issues with the contractor, kind of getting subcontractor on the site. The company could be in a hot spot. The company that blew in a hotspot project is the company that were, uh, lined up to do the work for us and they just allowed that project to jump the gun. It's being coordinated with the general contractor for the.
I thought we already had somebody, but we didn't, haven't we done part of the project?
We've done the, we've done the part of the project where we've done everything on our rolling fleet. So all of that stuff's been done. Now, the only thing that's waiting is that the first contractor did not have a license to work in South Carolina. So through our procurement process, they got kicked out. To Mike's point, the second one has been, we are now wait, we are now subject to this other project that was going on across the street.
Note, self, as you take bids, make sure they've got license to operate in the state?
We did.
Do we noted?
Absolutely correct.
And I think another thing to remember about the convenience center is this, is, you know, this is something we've discussed. We're two years into a five year agreement with our current provider. And the future of sanitation in Greer to some degree is up in the air. So to go dropping two million dollars on a convenience center that may be. Integral to our fleet if we end up getting into that business ourselves is something we need to consider as well. So that's why we're, we're, I think it's one of the things we're doing to slow roll a little bit on that. But this is to Mr. Betis' point about the, the escalated costs of these. We knew that if we start knocking these projects off the list, some are gonna be higher than we anticipated. And we would have to cannibalize, um, some of the other projects on the list. To me, this is one of those projects that are gonna get, it's gonna get cannibalized to some degree. And we're gonna make the improvements we can out at the convenience center while we can, uh, until we've determined the long-term viability of how that, that property's gonna be used. I wanna just kinda, just kinda give you all a little bit of idea of what we're, we're looking at from, um, some design. Uh, this is some of the conceptual work that has been done, uh, for the Berry Avenue that the city will, um, en- encompass. Uh, this is some of the ongoing work. This is the, this is our side. Yeah, this is our side of Berry. The work that's been done, again, I'll point you back to the estimated completion date for our side is, I think, we have it in May. Yeah, yeah, we're looking at a length of, yeah, May. Uh, this is, the next one is Berry, or, uh, this is the floor plan that we're working on right now to get Berry. Uh, the Greer relief side of Berry completed. This is some of the ongoing work that's going in there. They are in early spring. Essential completion date to get Greer relief moved over. Um, this is just, uh, again, a conceptual of the, um, the, some of the, uh, site plan for the golf course. This is some of the work that's going on out there now, uh, in, in and around the clubhouse. It has been a very busy scene. We're hoping to have that one done. Uh, April-ish, May-ish of twenty twenty four. Uh, this, of course, is the, just a black and white elevation of the front side. In the rear of the, um, Subaru Road Station. And this is some ongoing project photos of, of the work. Uh, done to date. One thing I wanted to drop in front of you right here is just, uh, this is our smart sheet software. And it is to kinda give you an idea that right now we have fifty one active projects that are underway. Now, these are everything from the fire station that is, uh, that is being constructed to, uh, as you can see on here, uh, swing repair. Uh, in, in city park and, uh, vent hall lighting up fits, et cetera. But these are all the active projects that are on our smart sheets. That, um, that is integral to what John does on a day-to-day basis, but to ensure that all of our departments that have ongoing projects are making sure that we're all talking and, um. Keeping up with what's going on and assigns duties to those folks. But, um, this is, these are all projects that we had budgeted for. We are, um. Working actively on and should be, most of which, if not all, completed by the end of this fiscal year. So it is, um, obviously a very busy time. As you go back to the, the slide on future power plant projects. As soon as, uh, this door is closed, if we close these projects out, we have, uh, other ones waiting in the, along with all the other, uh, just mundane projects that, that come along with, uh, operating city of our size. Mike, John, anything you wanna add to that? If not, we all, we all stand ready for any questions that you may have.
So what's the total on the ARPA money?
The total of the ARPA money was sixteen point six million dollars. Six point six, which is restricted under that, um, the original treasury guidelines.
Wards.
Go ahead.
It, it has to be committed by when, twenty twenty four?
End of twenty twenty four.
End of twenty twenty four and obligated the next year.
Spend by twenty six.
Spend by twenty six, okay. All right.
Wards Creek shows is four million dollars and then one point five. That's just for the phase one?
Phase one.
Both of those numbers?
Yeah, so, uh.
Phase one, we, uh, the formula was what we had estimated, the entire Wards Creek project. We're only doing phase one at this time.
At two and a one point five.
Yes, sir.
That mostly acquisition?
Actually, most of that's trail, trail work itself, but you gotta remember, we got seven hundred and fifty thousand. Is that right? How much of that grant you got from that Wards Creek? Yeah, one point two. Yeah, one point two of, of which we're responsible, two hundred and fifty, yeah, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Do we expect some of the same shocking increases as we look toward the station north of town and the station south of town? Some of the same issues, or do we anticipate building costs and other costs to stabilize where those projects are concerned?
Number on that slide for those future projects is, is the, the budget number we're using is ten.
Cause that's where we are now on South Subaru?
Eight point nine right now. So we're just, we put in.
That's just, you know, design and construction, all, you know, everything. Doesn't technically count if there needs to be like a length. But right now, we're working. Here at the site, before that, so, um, that can be. Elevating the.
Yeah.
Seven point nine.
Already got that.
That. Mike mentioned something about the design call. And so Andy knows, cause he and I have had some very loud conversations about two things I'm about to say. One is the design of the fire station. We put a lot of effort into our new bit, this council has. Into the new buildings that, that we've built. And we talk about who we are. And I believe when you're spending ten million dollars on a building. Unless it's just, I, I, something like a fire station, cause everybody sees it. It should represent where it is, the city, all of these things. My opinion, and it's just my opinion, the fire station doesn't represent any of that. If, 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 if you go to look and you pull out the station design, station designs all across the country. You can just about put ours in that magazine because it's the same. Everybody was wanting to use the bifold. Bay doors, which are probably, I don't know, five, ten times the cost of regular bay door. I, I, I think the stations need to represent either the area or the buildings that we build need to represent the area and the city that they're in. The other is, um, we, we've mentioned low hanging fruit and projects and, uh, and, and this is, this is just a passion of mine. But the, the, um, the, the, the area surrounding the golf course. I know that it's an expensive thing to go in and plan for trails and outdoor amphitheaters, edu, whatever. It is expensive. But I believe that there are things that, that we can do just to dress it up. I mean, we have, we have equipment and we have staff there that you could dedicate. You know, right now would be a great time. You'd be finishing up leaf season and they're not cutting grass, but they could go in with their heavy cutters that we have. Cut a lot of that, open it up, do special things to enhance the, the habitat for the, the. The vegetation, make sure we've got native vegetation and not invasive stuff and for the, the wildlife habitat out there. And we could do things, um, and I think, you know, Mike and I have talked about this, but, um. I just, I just wanna let, for, for y'all's food for thought.
Sheriff, one thing that we just let you know from our conversation. Our point to, like you said, we're wrapping up leaf season and once I get, I thought that transition period between. Like mid, late June, again, where you, uh, in February, move out there, we'll start doing some work out there on the side, uh, to.
Yeah.
And walk out there and just try to give an idea of where to start.
Good.
Jay, in terms of, are, are you talking about having a design standard for all our new buildings or what?
Well, I, I just think that when we built this building and the police and courts, it all has elements of what Greer is.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna spend ten million dollars on a building, I, I would say it would, the, the, the designer needs to do more than. Cut and paste. And that, that's just kind of a, that, that's just the issue that I have. You know, that, that station, I don't, I don't know, is, is the design, I don't know what it represents when you look at the elevations of it because. You're right off the highway, which is C three, but then you began. Right across the street residential all the way down on Subaru for that. So that's just, that's just me. And I'm a, I'm, I'm very traditional with, um, what I like to see in construction, so.
Something like headquarters then maybe.
Well, no.
I'm just giving you hard knocks.
Hey, look, headquarters can be dolled up, but, you know, and it's, uh.
Yeah, I guess the question becomes for me is, are we willing to pay whatever extra to do all brick exterior and do some of those kinds of things? You know, i- i- as opposed to generic. Now, I will say this, I think there is some advantage to generic because the last thing in the world I want is one of those fire stations that looks like a big barn somewhere. Or one that's in another upstate city that's a metal looking building with great big numbers and, you know, letters all over it.
Yeah, but I, I, I think there needs to be some sort of, and that's Greer. And not just fire stations, cause there's, there's a lot going on there.
Okay.
Well, I wanna leave you with one thing, and I wanna drive this point home. Um, fifty one active projects right now. We are on pace to, um, uh, end this fiscal year, uh, where we were, we, we had planned to end this fiscal year, funding these projects, completing these projects. So from a pacing standpoint, I'm confident, I'm confident that we're where we need to be. But an important thing to remember in this whole process is, one, it's very labor intensive from a staff perspective. John and Lindsay, they spend all of their days chasing contractors and ensuring that things are built the way that they're, they're supposed to be. Mike is constantly on top of this from a budgetary standpoint. Uh, Dorian has been, uh, in, in, um, instrumental in ensuring that we're getting easements that are necessary. I say this only to point out that this has been, these number of projects is really a first time that we've dealt with this in this city from a staff perspective, from a quantity for, um, um, relationships. I wanna make sure that that's clear, but the next phase of our development and our growth and our construction is going to be bigger. If council decides that's the way we're gonna go, it'll be more complex and it'll be more intense. So I'm pleased with the way everything's moving, uh, at this, at this, uh, pace. I would've loved to have seen prices in a different, um. The bottom line, a little bit different on some of these projects, but we are where we are. I wanna make sure that y'all understand that, one, uh, we're moving on. Two, uh, these are gonna be great projects, uh, for, to serve the citizens of Greer. We're gonna do everything we can to come in at or under budget. And that your staff is committed to, um, arguing and fighting over the fine details of every one of these invoices that we're getting. And that we're not, um, we're not just rubber stamping what's given to us. So we're making sure that we're on top of those, uh, the dollars and cents. From a, from a staff perspective, but if you see in front of you these planned projects, these next, this next phase of council's inclined to move, uh, move down that road is substantial.
Are you gonna send us a copy of this?
You can have a copy of that. And if there's anything else that you need from us, if you have any other questions, we stand, uh, prepared to respond and get you what you need. But yes, sir, you will have a copy of this.
Are you prepared to publicly give us an update on any of these, where we stand on some of these?
I can tell you now that, um, the public safety training facility, we are, uh, finalizing some, uh, essential design elements. Basically, what's the square footage going to look like and that estimated cost per square foot. That's where I think we're pretty safe in that sixteen million dollar range right now, hoping to get it right at fifteen.
I did wanna say that when that first number that came back to twenty eight.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We already got four million off of it and.
So, but that was one of, that was actually council's top priority, if you'll recall from two years ago when we had this discussion. The second one is, uh, the fire station north of town. We're actually probably in a good position from a design standpoint to move on that. I just need the dirt to put it on. Uh, we're working on finding, uh, finding that spot where that's gonna go because it's sensitive, given the, the juxtaposition of the lakes. To where we don't wanna put it in a position where we're, we're not helping our response times in that area. So it is crucial that we get the, the property in the right spot. As far as, uh, Project Indy goes, um, we are doing some initial design work and, uh, initial engineering work. We've done some environmental work on that. And, uh, in Project Titus, we're actually looking at some land acquisition at this time. And there'll be some, some initial due diligence work that'll go into that. But all of the costs that are incurred in these four projects are subject to the reimbursement resolution. So if council is inclined to seek the bond that would be required to pay for all these things, all of that can be replay, uh, replenished through the general fund.
Others? Questions or comments?
South Tiger Trail, uh, can, how did we determine the scope of that project? Like, are we thinking about doing? A blacktop paved surface where you can ride bikes or to what extent is this gonna play out? And then how did we come up with that?
Well, what we, what, uh, from a, from a project planning standpoint, that was, yes, that was it. The idea is a multi-use trail. That would go from the, where our property begins, um, on the, on the Country Club roadside along the South Tiger, all the way down to the end of the golf course at the lake on Appalachia. So it would, the idea there very, uh, root, from a rudimentary descriptor is, yes, it would be a multi-use trail. Accessing underneath the bridge at Country Club. Um, so that provides a lot of that stuff in there. Then, of course, if you wanna see some other scoping type things, we've got it. Uh, which would add other amenities to it, uh, ADA access, et cetera. So that right there to bare minimum is what we're looking at. But it would have other amenities.
Are we gonna have any kind of, um, facilities out there for outdoor education?
I didn't, we don't have any of the breakdowns. That we got today or yesterday. Was it yesterday, Mike? We got that?
Yeah.
The bulk of that's engineering and trail construction. The rest of it would have to be phased out over the number of years where we would want to add things. To, so, Mr. Edward, to your point. If we ever did an amphitheater in the wooded area out there, that would be something that we have not priced out in this initial phase. Switchback through for trails or rustic camping or all the boat launches, those are, those are the things that are kind of unknowns right now.
Those would also be the kind of things that would appeal to the grant funding and/or other organizations that we could partner with. That'd be perfect. I mean, with the school district or with, uh, in. Natural resources or some of those other folks.
Well, Mike and I, we've spoken, um, past few days about potential partners that are out there that. You know, they'll come in and do things or really hold your hand while you do stuff, so.
Yeah.
I was, I was wondering though about the trail. I mean, in the interim, would it not be good to just get like a forestry manager to go out there and just chew up a course to be able, make it more natural, just to where you could kind of meander along the river and walk and, you know, just to kind of get some benefit from it?
We've discussed that, and I think it would be incumbent upon us to ensure that if we are inviting the public onto public property, that we have checked all of our, all the boxes necessary to ensure that everyone can access it safely, regardless of your, how ambulatory you may be. So I don't want to open that up in such a way where we're actually inviting problems and not putting it up, not opening it for everybody that could use it at any given time. I just want to be very sensitive to that. So in theory, yes, you chew it all up and you have a, you just run a path down there that people can walk on, but I think if we're going to invite the public onto a public asset, we need to make sure that the bare minimum is, is done for safety.
Well, to Lee's point, you wouldn't have to do, you, you could choose a section that you wanted to do that, instead of doing maybe the whole river frontage. You could do a small section where you could say, yeah, this is accessible, because you can almost drive out there.
Well, every trail that I've ever gone and walked, I mean, I've, I've never even, I mean, I've just kind of crossed the Swamp Rabbit Trail. I have no desire to go over there and get on the blacktop. That's not a nature trail to me. You know, like, we go to Highlands and we go to Brevard and places like that, because it feels more rustic. I mean, you're on, you're on kind of a muddy, foot beaten path, and, and they even have volunteers that come in and clear paths and, and.
So what about?
We did, listen, I, I've been a part of that. We, you know, Boyd Pond in Aiken, it was a, it was a, it was a county park, and you would have thought you were on a trail for miles and miles and miles because of the switchbacks that we, that were utilized throughout the whole thing. It was a wonderful, but there were still the, the base of the trail, the, there were boardwalks through the swamp, and there was paved areas through the swamp. You could go off on your own. That's where, if you, we have the actual trail that runs along the river from the north end of our property down to the lake, yeah, that's the main trunk of it. But if we have other access points that are for foot traffic only, et cetera, that are more rustic, that's, that's a later phase of the entire development of the park.
I understand about the accessibility, but to Lee's point, you know, when you go Jones Gap, or you go to Caesar's Head to go out to Raven Cliff Falls, all of that's not accessible. I mean, it's barely accessible when you're half in state.
They have some accidents there, yes.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Because people go on their own.
You're in the wild. I mean, this. So, so you don't have to provide accessibility when you're doing trail systems like that?
I can't speak to what, but I just know that I, I, I think that there's an expectation in an urban environment or on a trail system that is owned and operated by the city of Greer or any city, that there's, there's reasonable accessibility and that people can access it. If I know I'm going to Jones Gap and going hiking through the woods, I expect I have a trail that's, that's natural, but in this particular case, I think we need to, at least the trunk of our trail system is going to be on the South Tiger River Trail, that where we're going to start everything else off of. That's the one that needs to be.
I do think it's a choice, though. I mean, the Cottonwood Trail is a good example in Spartanburg, for instance. I mean, it does the exact same thing, it just goes along the river. And essentially, they just had what I'm telling you, like a forestry service that just went in and mulched up the trees essentially, and, and so the mulch is the path that you walk on, and, and like I said, it's, it's more natural and, and just a place where people like to go and get in the shade and get off the beaten path and run and walk their dog and, and that kind of thing. There's, it's not, it's nothing really fancy. And I don't know, I guess the, you know, when I thought about this project, that's kind of the way I, I looked at it, was just a chance to kind of have a retreat and an escape. And I think what the scope that we're talking about is more, you know, turn it into a blacktop and, and, you know, and that has its place and that's nice, but.
Well, I think we're, we're talking a combination. The trunk, as you call it, would be a blacktop type thing most likely, but you're going to have limbs that are mulch or, or, or lits maybe.
I think as long as it does kind of cap, you know, doesn't just come in and wipe the whole thing out and, you know, turn it into, I think, you know, the, the natural beauty of it should be maintained and.
Sure.
And then, you know, like I'm saying, if you want a chance to get off of the path and, I think there should be some opportunity for that. And we talked about, well, you know, I think what Jay's saying too is to make sure, and he said this about nature and, and, you know, about the, the launch points and, and different things like that. I don't, I don't, I don't know if we plan to have camping areas or, you know, what extent we, you know, plan to take this to, but anyway, I just hope that those things will be considered in, in the scope of the project too.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
All right, others? We need to wrap up. Comments? Questions? Discussion? If not, I'm going to, I'm going to call the workshop to a close, and since we are literally at the, the hour of our regular meeting starting, let's take a short recess, council, and we'll reconvene back here shortly. So this ends the workshop and we will proceed with our regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting shortly. All right, folks, we are going to reconvene. We have met earlier this evening for a workshop on some updates on projects that we have ongoing in the city, and we have finished with that. Let's move forward with the agenda as stated for the Greer City Council meeting. This council meeting is being held on December the 12th, 2023. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for council. I'll ask that you please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join us in prayer if you'd like. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this Christmas season that is upon us. Thank you that we're here gathered for our last meeting of this year as a council, and thank you for the many blessings that you've poured out on our city this year. Thank you specifically for the staff that are here being recognized for their service and all those that continue to serve our city. Very thankful and appreciative for all that they do for us. Again, we're thankful for the city, thankful for our state, this great nation, and all those serving this great nation all over the world. We pray for them tonight, Father. Continue with us throughout the season, continue to pour out your blessings and help us to be grateful and thankful for all that you've given us, especially for the gift of your son. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Counsel, in each of our meetings, we set aside time for public forum. This is an opportunity for those folks that would like to address council to do so, as long as it's relative to something on the agenda that evening. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have the minutes of the November 28th, 2023 meeting contained in your packet this evening. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved. Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we've got employee recognitions this evening, and as Mr. Dumas mentioned just a moment ago, as we wind down this year, it's, it's a good time for us to get together. We had a full house last week at our employee breakfast, and I hope you had an opportunity to, to be a part of that. Always good to, to get together and was, I was trying to figure out a way for us to figure out how we were going to eat and said, asked all of our employees that had been here under, under three years to stand, and it was the vast majority, it looked like from where I was standing, of the people that were here. We are, we are adding employees at an incredibly, incredibly fast rate, and so we want to take time to recognize those employees that have been with us for a period of time, and we're going to do that this evening. I'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then we'll, we'll recognize those folks individually here in just a minute, but we do this through resolution. It's a resolution recognizing and commending City of Greer employees. It reads, whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Andrew Ballou has served in the engineering department for five years, Tyler Collins has served in the fire department for five years, Chandra Kelly has served in the building and development standards department for five years, Jessica Grimstead has served in the police department for five years, David Holtzclaw has served in parks, recreation and tourism for 10 years, and Reggie Waddell has served in the engineering department for 15 years. And whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City of Greer and the city council, in a meeting duly assembled, wishes to officially recognize and commend those employees for their distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby reward these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved this 12th day of December, 2023. I'm going to ask the administrator, if he would, to join me up front, and we will recognize those employees that are with us this evening.
Andrew Ballou.
Stay up here with us when we get a picture.
Tyler Collins.
Jessica Grimstead.
David Holtzclaw.
Reggie Waddell.
Make sure he doesn't fall. It says 15 years, but I remember the day he started at the fire department, so.
Show him a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, that was the longest that Tyler's ever sat still in, in five years of working for the city, so shout out to Tyler for that.
Mr. Mayorman, the administrator's report, please, sir.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. First of all, I want to do, I do want to thank you for making the time to be here for the, the workshop prior to this meeting. It is important to remind you all of, of what we're doing and, and our progress on a number of those things. With all the things that are going on, I know sometimes it seems overwhelming, and we all have a hard time keeping this stuff straight in our heads with, with the multiple projects that the city is, is undertaking. So we were happy to do this for you. We'll make sure that we provide that information to council tomorrow that was requested, and of course, anything that you need above and beyond the presentation, we'll be glad to provide. So with that, I just want to remind counsel of a couple of things. December 16th here at City Hall, I think it's the first time, Chief Hamby told me it was the first time we're actually going to have the Cops for Tots event here at City Hall, so December 16th, Cops for Tots. Second thing is the Holiday Arts Fair. The Center for the Arts Holiday Art Fair is, is through December 12th, tonight, from six to eight, we'll end it, and there are over 23 vendors, and all proceeds stay here in the City of Greer. Want to also recognize Ms. Ellie Horton. Ms. Ellie Horton was the recipient of a wish through the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and she was, she learned at the tree lighting and the Christmas parade that she was going to go to Disney, which was her wish. So I want to congratulate Ms. Ellie and of course, thank the Make-A-Wish Foundation and, and city staff and, and our, our leadership here that made that happen. So well done. And then finally, one last thing is, we just had a recent graduating class of our Citizens' Fire Academy. They completed the nine-week course to show people in Greer the functions and operations of the fire department, and so if you're interested in that, we will plan, the department plans on having another session in the early spring. So if you're involved in our social media or you're available, you have access to those social media, just kind of keep an eye on those things, and more information will come. Mr. Mayor, with that, that concludes my administrator's report for this evening.
Thank you, sir. And again, let me, let me echo the administrator's remarks. This is a, a very busy time for us, not, not the least of which involves every one of our departments, and hats off to all the folks that make the events happen that are going on right now from the, from the Cultural Arts Center, which had a huge crowd last week, weekend. I know I was down there for a while, but it, 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 as, as we got to the planning stages and looked at the weather and those sorts of things, you begin to realize how much time and effort is put into planning that weekend of events that we do to kick off our Christmas season, and there is, there is just about no tweaking that, because it involves everybody in the city. And just wanted to say thank you to, and I'm not even going to name the departments, because it literally is everybody. Thank you for, once you did that weekend, we had, we had some pretty good weather, may have been a little wet for the, the tree lighting, but it's winter and we'll, we'll, we do that regardless. And so, you know, all the decorations going up, all the events that are going on, all of, all of that, in addition to their regular duties is, is, is such that it's a yeoman's task to, to get all that done. And so I think all of council would agree, a tip of the hat to our employees, and thank you for, for the efforts that they have put in through this holiday season. Incredible how, how, how good it looks around town, and thank you. With that then, let's, let's move to appointments for boards and commissions. Kenna McLardy is joining us this evening to help us better understand a nomination that we've got coming before us with the accommodations tax advisory committee. And so, Ms. McLardy, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, counsel. On behalf of the A-Tax Committee, I would like to recommend Ms. Heidi Henry to fill the vacancy of Mr. James Vogon, whose term ends at the end of this month. Ms. Henry's bio sketch is provided to you all. She is the owner-operator of Harvest Kitchen. She's looking forward to joining the committee and serving her community in that aspect. Should you have any questions regarding Ms. Henry and her approval to the accommodations tax committee? I'm here to assist with that.
I'll entertain a motion to receive at the, at the offering of the department head in regards to Ms. Henry's appointment to the accommodations tax advisory committee. I'll need a motion, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
This doesn't require a citizen to fill this position?
Of the city.
Right.
You can either be a citizen of the city or have business in the city.
Okay. Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, we will move to matters of old business, of which we only have one this evening. That is the second and final reading of ordinance number 33-2023. An ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by True North Properties LLC, located at 101 Green Leaf Drive and 103 Woodhaven Drive from R 12 Residential to R 7.5. Any new or additional information in that regard?
There are no updates.
No updates. With that then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel, we don't have any items for executive session this evening. I wish to thank you for your service through this past year. We have accomplished much and we have much to accomplish as we move towards a, a new year, this being our last meeting of the year. I'd like to wish you a happy holiday season and a blessed Christmas. And with that, we stand adjourned.